I'd like to call to order the September 23, 2020 Town Council Meeting. If we could arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's like the smoothest it's been in months. It's really nice to have everybody present and not hear that echo back and forth, so. Roll call, please.
Ryan Blazak.
Present.
Paul Panzic.
Here.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swett.
Here.
Craig Phillips.
Here.
David Wesson.
Present.
And Doug Perry is present.
Okay, so we have a quorum, all present. Item number four, we have no minutes to approve. Item number five is public comment. We ask you to keep your comments constructive, civil, and to agenda items, and try to limit them to three minutes. Do we have anyone signed up?
We have one person signed up, Adrian Bugari.
Adrian, you're up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Adrian Bugari, 11747 West 98th Avenue. I demand the resignation of Bet Hernandez. I want you, Gerald Swett, to leave too, and I want Flores to get out with his gang that actually she organized to get everybody out. Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment? Okay, we will move on. Item number six is a public hearing. We've got a public hearing. I'm sorry, one more thing. Beth, do we have Christopher O'Hara as that public comment?
Just to be an exhibit to the minutes.
Okay. So just so the record shows, Christopher O'Hara submitted comments regarding the 93rd Avenue expansion, so those be added to the record.
And, Mr. President, for the record, I did reply to him promptly via email explaining that most of his concerns are concerns of ours as well, and he replied back and appreciates that, so we'll keep him abreast of anything that would affect his property, but it is not our intent to affect his property in any way. In fact, it may be a positive for his property. Control some of the runoff there.
Okay, thank you. All right, so item number six is a public hearing. Item number A is ordinance 1714A through C, which is an ordinance for the 2021 municipal budget and the petitions to appeal for an increase above the max levy for the Civil, Town, Sanitary, and Water District as part of the budget. Item number one is proof of publications.
So, you don't publish this? I think Beth would be able to certify that it was properly uploaded to the Gateway.
Is your microphone on?
It is, I think.
Okay.
It's green, is that what it's supposed to be?
You're good, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
These were uploaded to Gateway. They're related appropriately.
Okay. And that's all that's required at this point.
That's all that's required.
Okay. Opening remarks. Craig, you want to start?
Sure, I just want to thank a number of people that were involved in the development of the budget and going through the capital needs process. I just want to thank the hard work that was put in by our department heads and other members of our town departments, members of the Town Council obviously worked very hard on a few of the items in the budget prior to this. Clerk Treasurer and her staff. Especially want to thank Eric Walsh from Baker Tilly for the hard work that they did putting together the comprehensive financial plan, which helped with the analysis, creation of some funding targets for us to take into consideration as we developed this, and will serve as a guide for budget decisions going forward. So just wanted to thank everybody involved in the process of getting us to this point and helping us present a balanced budget.
Thank you, sir. And Clerk Treasurer.
Okay, so this budget is slightly different than the previous budgets that we, or that actually I've been involved in. What makes this one a little bit different is that we are, and it's a little bit out of order from your, under the public hearing, but we are petitioning to appeal for an increase in our levy for the Civil, Sanitary District, and the Water District. Basically, just a little disclaimer, for fast-growing communities, the state realizes that we have some pressure on expanding our services to keep up with growing populations, so they give us an opportunity to increase our levy to account for that growth. So you'll see that is referenced a little bit in my PowerPoint presentation, and just to, you know, put it on record, we are petitioning, or you're going to consider tonight, petitioning for 120,822 extra for our Civil, 8,641 in the Sanitary District, and 7,073 for our Water District. That's petitioning for the excess growth. So if you want to put up the budget PowerPoint, Jason, that would be great, thank you. And I'll go through this quickly, it's probably boring to most, but the first slide that we're going to take a look at is our 2021 estimate of revenue. You'll notice that the town basically has 25 funds that we use on a regular basis. The amounts you see in the right-hand column signify what we estimate our revenue, or 2021 revenue, to be. These numbers are a combination of both tax revenue and miscellaneous revenue. These numbers do not include the excess levy petitions I just talked about, so in the event we receive approval from the DLGF, the amounts you see for General Fund will increase by that $120,822. The amount you see for Sanitary District will increase, I'll just go that way, to $377,428, and the amount you see listed for Water District will increase to $305,992. You'll see that we're looking for a total of estimated, these are estimates, $17,500,000 next year in estimated revenue. So then we go through the expense side of the budget. We generally break down the budget for this PowerPoint by building. We've got our Town Hall, our Public Safety, and then Public Works and our Parks Department, so that's how we'll go through this. Town Hall consists of the Town Council, Clerk Treasurer, and Building and Planning. I put on here three years' worth of budgets. You'll notice, just for point of reference, if you're reviewing the screen, in 2019, you'll see that the Town Council budget was kind of rather high, but I do notate that that includes our Community Crossing Grant match of $900,000, which kind of gives a reason why it's higher than than most other budgets. You'll see that for the 2021 budget, the Town Council will see an increase of 30%, or it'll go from $974,000 to about 1.2 million. The Clerk Treasurer's budget will see an increase of 2% from $160,000 to $163,000, and Building and Planning will see an increase of 7% for a total of $488,160. Overall, for our Town Hall building, that's a 20% increase and a total budget of 1.9 million. And at any time, you can stop and ask questions. Next screen is some of the capital improvements that Craig referenced in our five-year plan, and I do want to kind of notate that just because these are being presented as a capital improvement doesn't mean that we absolutely have to do the projects listed. I'll speak for myself, I'm more concerned about making sure whatever capital improvements we choose to do kind of stay within the dollar amounts, more so than the actual project itself. It's just what we put in the budget, kind of as placeholders. So my office, we put in a $15,000 placeholder for an office improvement, potentially an ADA door. The basement of Town Hall needs repairs of approximately $50,000. We do take in water in the basement, and Building and Planning has budgeted one vehicle. Just to make sure we're clear on this, these capital improvements are included in the expenses that I showed on the previous screen. Staffing plans for our Town Hall would be two people. In the budget, it includes a Public Improvements Inspector, which would be stationed through the Building and Planning Department. This would be a full-time position. Cost includes both the hourly FICA, MEDI, and PERF, so that would total roughly $89,120. And then the Town Council is looking to add on a part-time, 20 hours per week Recording Secretary. Same thing, this includes the hourly rate in FICA/MEDI for $24,470. We can move on to Public Safety, which consists of our Police Department and our Fire Department. Our Police Department works out of four funds. They work from the General Fund, a Police Department Special Revenue Fund, Public Safety, and LECE, which is their Training Fund. You'll see in 2020 to 2021, I'm not going to read the final amounts because everybody can see the screen, but they're looking at a 7% increase. This is the General Fund, just so everybody knows, this is basically where we pay the largest portion of salaries, some operational expenses and things of that nature. The Special Revenue Fund will see a decrease for the Police Department in 18%. I'll give a little history on this. We no longer accept 511s, which are our ordinance violation tickets, and so county takes that money now. And when people have to go to county, they're less likely to sign up for our deferral program, so we're seeing less money as a town. So since we're not generating as much income here, their budget kind of decreased a little bit. Public Safety, this is a fund that both the Fire and the Police Department split. This was kind of what we take in now in lieu of the 911 consolidation. So for Public Safety, for the Police Department, they're going to see an increase of 10%, and then LECE is their Training Fund. They'll see an increase of 40% or $10,000. Overall, their increase is 7%. Fire Department, again, same theory here, their General Fund picks up the biggest majority of payroll expenses and some operational. They're seeing a 12% increase in the General Fund. Their Cume Fire is seeing a 31% decrease. Their Public Safety portion of the fund is seeing a 6% increase, and their ambulance cap a 40% decrease. When you're looking at the Cume Fire and the ambulance cap with those decreases, it's generally because they're not buying any large pieces of equipment this year, so they don't need a larger budget. They're seeing a total of a 3% increase overall. So some of the capital improvements for these two departments, the Police Department, and again, these are what has, what you'll see in the five-year plan, and, you know, they don't necessarily have to purchase 26 laptops, it's just what's been earmarked. So they're looking to purchase 26 laptops, animal control door controls, Public Safety door controls. They'd like to add on a second canine unit, purchase five tasers, a portable radio, they need a new copy machine, an evidence kit, they've got a little bit of furniture replacement, the purchase of three vehicles, and then some reserve officer, that should say, not office, but officer equipment at $5,000, for a total of $400,000 in capital expenses. Again, all these items are listed throughout the budget, they've all been incorporated. Your Fire Department capital improvements would be, they're half of the Public Safety door controls, turnout gear and air packs, for a total of 75,500. There are no staffing plans to increase a police officer next year, however, there are two firefighters in the budget, both full-time, at a cost of $71,836 per firefighter. That includes, again, FICA/MEDI, um, excuse me, MEDI and PERF, for a total of 143,672. Moving along to the Parks Department, so the Parks Department is going to see a 33% increase in the General Fund, a 20% increase in their Park and Rec Fund, that's their operating fund, where you'll see their payroll and things of that nature, and then the Park and Rec Capital Fund, a 22% increase, for a total overall increase of 40%. Staffing plans for the Parks Department is one additional full-time employee for $51,917, and then some of their capital improvements would be the, our portion of the Founder's Park, potentially a, to finish off the Gates Bike Path, potentially add a park addition in the Gates, potentially repave and repair bike trails where needed, maybe install a pickleball courts, and then one vehicle, for a total of $893,000. Public Works comes from two funds, MVH and LRS. They are going to see a 2% increase this year from 2020. You'll notice that it's broken into two, we have unrestricted and restricted funds for MVH. Unrestricted would be more of their operational, restricted is, the state says 50% of our tax distributions in MVH must be spent towards construction, reconstruction, and maintenance of our highways or roads. So you'll see, it's been pretty steady across at about 300,000, we'll go towards that, and then LRS sees a significant increase of 8, at 89%. Some of their capital improvements, and again, I just, you know, just because these are listed doesn't mean that they're going to necessarily occur this year, it's just kind of our goal from the five-year plan. Paving and road rehabilitation at 2 million, this would be pending the award of the Community Crossing Grant. Potentially a 93rd Avenue corridor project, which we have marked in the five-year plan, that would be part of the bond. A storage building, a brine system, a street sweeper lease, a seven-yard dump truck with plow and spreader, a salt barn with acreage, fueling station equipment, a zero-turn mower, sidewalk replacement and grinding, and then annual storm sewer and drainage work from our Public Works Department. And then my last slide just kind of talks about our, what we, our bonds and leases, not in whole, but what we pay each year. So you'll notice if you go all the way to the bottom, we did have our Water Works Revenue Bond of 2009, it rolled off this year on August, we made our final payment of $134,095. And then February of 2021, we will make our final payment of our GO Bond from 2010 in the amount of $97,175. Going back up, you'll see our remaining bond payments, this is what we budget for every year, these are the amounts we budget for every year, and then when we anticipate our final payments to occur. The general, the new general obligation bonds in here, and we're estimating a payment amount of $238,768. Everything else has been kind of hanging around for a while now, so it's nothing new. That's all I have, in a nutshell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That really is a very, very quick version.
It hits all the good points, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, you covered, you covered about 100 pages of documents here and just, and just a few PowerPoint slides, so that was good, I appreciate that. So before we go into action, were there any questions on the budget from anything that she brought up here?
Two things, basically, the fire truck lease, is that, in other words, does it become ours, or do we get, you know, going to go after a new piece of equipment the next year?
Lease to buy?
The last, it's lease to buy, okay. Yeah, I didn't, I figured it might be, but I didn't know if we took possession of the truck or not. How long do we normally lease those for?
I think this one's a five-year lease, so we're in year two, so we will have after, 2020 was year two, right? Oh, 2017, we did it, geez. So we're just about done, I don't know if the Fire Department has, do you know, Mikey?
Well, it's not leased, I think they bought it and then that's a bank loan.
Right.
It's still, it's still paid for and becomes our property.
It becomes property of the town, obviously, just like a...
Well, when it said lease, I thought probably it was lease purchased, but I wasn't sure.
Right.
Typically with municipalities, there's a municipal lease, that means at the end of it, you own it for a dollar.
Okay.
What?
2022.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
I don't believe so.
Paul? Wayne? Mike?
Nothing.
Beth, I want to thank you for the information, so we probably want to take the action on the, consider the appeals first.
Sure.
Because we need the appeals approved to fit into the budget, is that correct?
You could go that route, that's, that's fine.
I thought when you said we were doing it backwards.
Well, I did it, I did it out of order from your agenda.
Oh, okay. Do you need to open the floor on the budget? Yes, I will do that. Are we accurate that we can go according to the agenda, or do we have to flip it around? Before we do action?
You want to open the public comment.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, but yeah, in terms of the way it's listed on there, you can, at the discretion of the Chair, you can take the petitions first.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will go to item number three of this public hearing, it's opening the floor to public comment. Does anyone want to step forward and make comment on the budget? Calling twice? Three times? Okay, we will close the floor to comment. So that being said, then let's go down to item number eight, which would be a motion to consider the Civil Town Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of $120,822 on first reading. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item number nine, Motion to Consider the St. John Sanitary Petition to Appeal for an Increase in the Max Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of $8,641 on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes five to zero. Item number 10 is a motion to consider the St. John Water District Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of $7,073 on first reading. Do I have a motion?
Again, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's what I thought, I'm not going to 11, 12, or 13 this month.
They're repeats.
Those are next months.
If possible, we need them to be adapted this month, because if we're going to appeal, they need to be in.
Okay.
Before your next October meeting.
Okay. So then we will go to number 11, that would be a motion to approve the St. John Civil Town Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Max Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of $120,822 on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Before I go to vote, you gentlemen understand what we're doing here? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes five to zero. We'll go to item 12, is a motion to approve the St. John Sanitary Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Max Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of $8,641 on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And support?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Item number 13, Motion to Approve the St. John Water District Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of $7,073 on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, and is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Wayne. I forgot for their note-taker's benefit, I need to really say who made the motion and who made the second. I thought now that we're not virtual anymore, we could get away with it, but I apologize to whoever does their minutes there. All right, so we've got a motion, we've got a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is also approved, five to zero. Now we will go back to item number five, which is a motion to consider ordinance 1714A on first reading only.
I'd like to comment on that.
You may.
I don't know what page this is, but there's an appropriation for, on the line item for $118,406. I want to reduce that by approximately $5,800, which would be something that would be my payment for next year. I, I don't feel that I'm entitled to it, I don't think it's owed to me. I don't want that, so I want that taken out of the line item. That's given me a 37% increase, and I don't feel that I need to take that, and that's my opinion, and strictly my opinion. I think that everybody else is getting a 2.8 raise, that would give us, or give me about a 37% raise, and I don't want that, so I would like that to reflect back to the minutes, and if they can, if you can take that off, that's great. That's my wishes.
Okay, since this is already in the system, what's your recommendation?
I believe we can reduce the budget, but we can't increase the budget at this point, correct?
Correct. Now that the Form 3 has been posted, you can reduce any line item, you cannot increase from this point forward.
Okay.
I don't know what that process would be, though.
It's on your Form 1 and Gateway, there's two columns, there's one that's advertised, one adopted, you just change it in the adopted.
Just the adopted column, okay.
Just the adopted, keep the other column the same.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so that's a motion that you're making, Wayne?
Right, and to me, it just, how I feel as a person, I believe that you shouldn't ask somebody to do something that you're not willing to do yourself, so that's my personal conviction. I want to be able to walk down the street and talk to my neighbors and my fellow, well, my ex-employees that are people that I work with, so that's, that's my whole reasoning.
I guess I'm confused. Okay, is there support for Wayne's motion?
Can we make a motion just to grant Wayne's wishes?
He made the motion, so he's looking for support, so yes, that's...
I'll support it.
Okay.
Thank you.
1714A.
So, can I just clarify?
Please do.
For the person that's doing the minutes, what I, I think what the record should reflect is that Mr. Pondinas moved to approve, or to consider ordinance 1714A on first reading as amended to remove the item...
To reduce the item.
Right, to remove, or to reduce the item of the, and I didn't write down the amount, Wayne, 58?
Well, it's, it's, I don't know the exact figure, it's right around $5,800.
So, so he would be moving to approve on first reading only, ordinance 1714A as amended with that reduction.
Right.
And whoever made the second would have to just affirm that that's what they understood as well.
I'll second the motion reaffirming Wayne's decision to reduce the line item by $5,800.
Is $5,800 sufficient, or do we want to the exact?
You could say, we know what he's talking about, it's the approximate.
I don't have the exact figure, but...
It was six grand even, wasn't it?
It's $5,796.38.
Right, there you go. It was...
It is extra.
Okay. So just for the record, then, what happened is previously the Town Council salary in the 2020 salary ordinance was $22,513.57, of which $16,717.19 came from the General Fund, and $5,796.38 came from the wastewater utility. We agreed back in January of this year that since the wastewater utility was not put together properly, the Town Council agreed to forego that $5,796.38 by each of us for this year, provided and assuming that that was going to get added back into the salary ordinance for 2021 and added into the General Fund. We were doing that so that we would appear more transparent in exactly what the salary for the Town Council was. So last year's salary, if you combine the two from General and from Utility, was $22,513.57, and our salary ordinance for 2021 will be exactly that. Wayne is asking that that $5,796.58 that would go to him, that he does not want that, so...
And, and we can go back further with that. At one time, the waste, well, another, another group of people were getting the money, and then the Town Council at that time decided, we're going to take that money. And then the town council at that time decided, we're going to take that money. And the reason why I'm doing this is, at that time, the paperwork wasn't done properly, and the money was paid out, but the paperwork wasn't done properly, and that's why I'm doing that. I feel that this is the right way to do this. I got elected to serve the people, not serve myself. So that's how I feel, and in my heart of hearts, that's why I'm here.
That's fine. You're allowed to do that. I will point out, though, that it's fairly common in most municipalities that the town council members get paid out of the general fund, but they also get paid for boards and committees that they serve on. So that's not unusual. But anyway.
But again, I said, I wasn't entitled to it. We're not entitled to it. So it's not an entitlement for me, and that's just how I believe, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have support. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? Nay? One against?
Aye.
Okay, we move on. Item number? Yes.
What item number was that?
That was five.
Five, yeah.
That was the.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that was the motion to approve on first reading?
It was.
So that needs to be unanimous?
No, to consider it, it needs to be unanimous. So I would ask that the record reflect that the, that there was unanimous consent to consider the motion on first reading, but that the motion then passed four to one. Follow me? So to do it on first reading, you need unanimous consent to do it of the people that are here, but you need two-thirds of the body to actually pass it? And since you have five, two-thirds, to get over the two-thirds hurdle, you've got to have four. You have four, and by general consent, I think there was unanimous consent to consider it.
But we're not adopting tonight.
I thought his motion was to consider and adopt, no?
On first reading.
First reading only.
Okay.
It needs to come back next month.
Okay, well, then it would come back next month. I misunderstood.
So the motion is to consider ordinance 1714A on first reading only.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a procedural.
Right.
Now, is it going to be rewritten to reflect that change for next month?
It should be. It should be, yes.
It'll be re-presented to you next month.
Okay, that's what I was saying. Is it going to be an amended ordinance?
It'll be an amended Form 4, then? Is that?
It'll be an amended ordinance for your signature, yes.
So can we take his? Can we? Okay.
That might screw up, it won't, will it screw up your submissions, Beth?
No.
No? Okay.
So we took the consideration and his, and his agenda, or his amendment, all in one motion?
That's, right.
Okay.
Right.
I just want to make sure we did both. Okay. All right, so we'll go to item number six, which is a motion to consider ordinance 1714B on first reading only. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
I'll second that.
Motion by Brian Blazak, support by Paul Panzik. Any comments, questions on this one? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item number seven is a motion to consider ordinance 1714C on first reading only. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. That should get us through the public hearing. Any other comments? Beth, questions?
Yes, one thing I forgot. I did put up copies of the budget books on the coffee table. If anybody in the audience would like me to email them a copy, there's a sign-up sheet. You can fill out your name and email, and I'll email it to you. They're also located on the website under the clerk treasures tab with, just by a link, or you can also view them on Gateway as well. So whatever your preference is, or if you don't care to read them at all, then that's fine, too.
How do we get into Gateway, Beth?
It's just.
Is it on the website?
I have a link on the website, but you can also just go to Gateway, and then you would just search for the town of St. John, and there's all sorts of different things.
I was going to ask you how it was listed.
Yeah, I mean, it would be listed separately by Civil Sanitary and Water, but then you can search salaries and old budgets and all kinds of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Westlin?
No.
Gentlemen? Okay, we'll move on. Number seven, new business. 7A is to consider ordinance 1715, which is an ordinance amending the emergency medical services and ambulance rates and fees. My question would be, is this something that needs to be considered and adapted tonight, or can it wait until final adoption for next month? Any idea, Mike?
Can we consider it tonight and approve it and adopt it?
If it's unanimous, yeah.
Okay. All right, so then.
It's the pleasure of the council.
This doesn't have to be noticed due to an increase in rates?
No.
I just want to make sure on that.
It's not a, no.
No, okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1715.
Is there support for that?
I'll support.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
No.
Sorry, opposed? I'm sorry. Wayne opposed? So four to one? Okay. All right, so then I guess we're not going to adopt tonight. All right, we need to have unanimous?
You need unanimous consent if you want to adopt it tonight.
Right.
And with a four to one vote, that.
Moves to next month.
Moves it to next month.
Okay.
I'd like to have a little more discussion, whether I just.
You want to do it now?
Well, we could, but maybe we should do it when an executive meeting.
Study session.
Study session.
I'm sorry.
I know, those terms get.
Yeah, you get confused. I'm just questioning the amount, what we're going to raise it. I thought that was kind of high. I don't know if we should do something like that. I know we have to do it. We haven't done it for a while, probably quite some time. I'd like to maybe see it stair-stepped. I think, Mike, you know about this. It's like 75% increase?
Yeah, it's about a 75% increase, but see, here's the thing. We haven't, the reason it's a steep increase is it hasn't been increased since they've started it back in 2007, so we've, you know, gone on 13 years. And where the ultimate, where it raised, what we raised it to is still far below many of your municipalities around here. And those municipalities don't provide the service that we provide.
Then, don't we end up fourth, Mike?
What's that?
On the chart, I think we ended up fourth of all the municipalities around here. We weren't even first.
No, we weren't first.
We were fourth, I think.
It's after the change. We're still like in fourth, yeah, we're not the highest.
Yeah, we're at the bottom of the barrel right now.
Well, because we haven't had the raise, but now we have a lot of senior citizens in town and.
But they won't be affected by that because most of your senior citizens are Medicare, and they're set at a certain rate.
Right, and I had questioned it before. I know we've had meetings.
The rate increase would affect the people that pay through insurance.
So the Medicare rate is staying the same?
The Medicare's rate stays the same. The federal government only pays you a certain amount.
That's it, it's locked in.
And the rest is written off, right?
Yeah, that's every, every couple, every year or so, we wipe off.
Two, two times.
Two times a year, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 of uncollectible because of Medicare.
Yeah, I looked at, I looked at the rates, and I made, wow, that's a little bit of money, and I thought we could do that stair-step it. That's my opinion.
Well, it's fine here, well noted.
Any other questions from anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Item B is to consider resolution 202009-23, which is a resolution for a civil town transfer of appropriations. Is that you?
That's me, yep.
Okay.
The next three resolutions are basically just kind of cleaning up line items in the budget. So if a certain line item goes negative, then you transfer money from an area that has a positive. So over the last couple of months, we just kind of keep track of it, write it down, and you guys just have to approve that change. Housekeeping.
Right.
End of the year stuff.
It'll, yeah, we'll probably end up doing at least, like, as we get to the end of the year, it's going to get more difficult because, you know, there's not as many items that are going, lines that have positive balances to transfer from, so.
The items run out of money.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You got it, Brian.
Does anybody have questions on this, on this resolution? Then I will look for a motion. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 202009-23?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Wayne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item C, consider resolution 202009-23A, which is a resolution for sanitary district transfer of appropriations. Any additional comments, Beth?
No.
Still cleaning house?
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, was there any questions or comments on this resolution? Okay, do I have a motion to adopt resolution 202009-23A?
So moved.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item D, consider resolution 202009-23B, which is a resolution for Water Works District Transfer of Appropriations. Any comments needed?
No.
Any questions, gentlemen? Then I am looking for a motion to adopt resolution 202009-23B.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item E, consider rezoning for the Preserve East from Open Space to R1, which consists of 35 acres of land in the 9,500 block of White Oak Avenue. This received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission with a five to one vote. Mr. Panzik, can you enlighten us on the Plan Commission's action?
Sure, this is known primarily as the Casboni property. It's east of White Oak, adjacent to the original preserves. I want to say it's approximately 35 acres, and the proposing approximately 35 homes. Do I have that right, Jack? Give or take? So it's a density of about one home per acre, which is really low density. It's planned to be a quality of housing somewhere falling between the original preserve and Continental, somewhere similar to the subdivision that exists, Rosewood? Is that the name of it?
Yeah.
So similar to Rosewood, maybe even just a little newer, a little fancier. But, yeah, it received a favorable recommendation. It's certainly the type of development we welcome.
I'm interested in the one negative vote. Was that recorded for?
Currently, the land is open space, and technically, you could build homes on open space at, I think, minimum two-acre lot sizes. However, so there was a vote to just keep it as open space. Just to enlighten the town council a bit, our comprehensive plan, it is not a goal in our plan to, to aim zoning towards open space. R1 is usually the premium spot. Open space is not necessarily a goal. And anyhow, that's where that vote was. Yeah.
Mr. Slager, do you have any comments you'd like to address with the council? Since you're, since you're here? Okay. Now, does anybody have any questions for Paul or for Mr. Slager? Okay, then I will look for a motion on the rezoning of the Preserves East from Open Space to R1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
To approve or deny?
To approve.
I'm sorry, okay, thank you. Motion to approve the rezoning of Preserves East from Open Space to R1. Brian, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Paul. Questions or comments? I did that already, didn't I?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes five to zero. Item F, consider acceptance of a letter of credit for Greystone Unit 1 Block 5 in the amount of $45,048.90. This received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Questions or comments? Then I will look for a motion.
A motion to accept the letter of credit for Greystone Unit 1 Block 5 in the amount of $45,048.90.
Thank you, Paul. Is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
So, four to zero with one abstain. All right. Item G, consider professional services agreement with American Structure Point. And so this is just, basically, this is just a general services agreement? Craig?
Correct, this is a general services agreement, which would allow us to complete tasks as we deem necessary. Basically, it's an umbrella that allows us to complete tasks with American Structure Point as we deem necessary in the future. It just saves us the step of having to go through and get a contract, you know, written up in the event that we need a particular service that's well-suited to be provided to us from American Structure Point.
Okay, so this isn't about anything specific? It's just in general, in case we need them?
Right.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Craig?
When, when are they going to start this work or the service?
They're not. This is, that's the next one.
Okay, well, I was, I'll get that, then, the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
This is just a general contract that we can, if we want to have them to do something, we can ask them. The next one is the actual do the something specific, I think was what your question is.
Right.
Okay. All right, so then all in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, did I get a motion?
No.
No.
Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, a motion to approve entering into professional services agreement with American Structure Point for engineering services.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item H is to consider Task Order 1 with American Structure Point for Engineering Services for 2020, the NERCSE, no for project. Craig?
Okay, so what this is, is currently, there is a grant application process that's open through the Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. That opened last Thursday. There's a very short window of time in which to submit applications for these projects. I believe that the deadline for that is October 21st, if I'm not mistaken, which gives us a very short period of time in which to put an application together, all the paperwork that goes along with that application, which has to include background information about the cost of the project, some basic, basic understanding of engineering associated with the project, very preliminary engineering associated with the project, and a very detailed score sheet that has to be accompanied by a number of attachments. And it's our desire to divvy up the task of submitting applications on our behalf between a couple of companies, so that we kind of put the expertise that each company has in the place that we feel it's best fit. And we've identified a couple of applications that we would like to have considered to be submitted through American Structure Point, or with the assistance of American Structure Point. We already have, we already have a professional services agreement with the other company that we would also be looking to do this work with, so it's not necessary for us to, to do that with them. So, um, this is basically to allow you to, I'm sorry, to allow American Structure Point to complete Task Order 1, which is expected to be two, potentially three, applications for various categories of the funding that's available through the NERCSE process. And basically, like I said, those services that include all that documentation needs to be put together to accompany the application, as well as the cost estimates for that. So I know Eric Wolverton is here from American Structure Point as well to answer any questions you have. But basically, every two years, this process becomes available through NERCSE. It involves a variety of different categories of types of funding that are available, everything from road construction, having to do with existing roads, new road, new road construction in segments, off-street pathways, intersection improvements, that sort of thing. And I think we've identified three categories that we feel are good fits for us to submit applications for, and asking for approval for us to move forward with American Structure Point to help us put those together.
What does NOFA stand for, Craig?
Oh, sorry, Notice of Funding Availability.
Okay.
So it's a federal notice of funding availability that's carried out through the Regional Plan Commission as their agent. And I believe that this, this dollar amount has also changed. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Eric, as well. It's, it's no longer the dollar amount that's shown there.
Good evening.
Good evening. We had previously prepared a task order after discussion with Mr. Phillips, outlining preparing NOFA applications for up to three projects. After discussions today, as he outlined, that was reduced to two. So we, in kind, we reduced our fee that's outlined within the task order. It was $10,000, it's now been reduced to $7,500. That is an hourly rate not to exceed. So if the effort is below that, obviously, we would invoice for less than that. I did bring three originals, two copies of that, for your consideration.
Now, the $7,500 not to exceed, that's the, just fill out the application work?
Yes, for both applications.
And that's Klein Avenue and...
Klein Avenue and some off-street pathway work throughout town.
Bike paths.
Bike paths throughout town.
And this is 80/20 federally funded?
This is 80/20 matched money, yes, so 80% of the, if we receive the approval for the funding, 80% would be provided by the Surface Transportation Program of the federal government, and then 20% would need to be matched by the town. And this is for a funding cycle that begins in 2024?
2025 and 2026.
I'm sorry, well, the fiscal year 2025 starts in July of '24.
July 1st of '24.
And, right, so it's fiscal years '24, I'm sorry, '25 and '26. The earliest the funding would become available would be July of '24, if, depending on how those applications are approved by NERCSE.
Correct.
And for clarification, Mike, I've been a little bit involved in this myself, and it's not just filling out an application, they actually have to do some preliminary engineering, map it all out conceptually. So you have to do that first 5%, 10% engineering to actually put it on paper and show them, and then you score it and back it up and fill out all the paperwork. So you're really paying for engineering and then the execution of getting the application in. And it's one of those applications, you have to cross every T dot, every I, because you miss one thing, you miss the vote, and it's two more years. So we want to make sure we capture any, any kind of federal funding we can get, because these are the type of projects we'd like to see in St. John, and our town's never gone after this money. And it's out there, we're paying it.
And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, almost every town that submits for these applications does so with the assistance of an engineering firm because of the complexity of these applications.
And one thing we haven't outlined is the cost estimating that's associated with it. It has to be very detailed. I mean, we want to make sure that when we're assisting you, we are requesting the amount of money that's going to be needed to construct. And then, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, there is a requirement for inspection on federal aid projects, so make sure we have an understanding of what those costs are as well.
Now, with the short timeline, you know, was it October 21st it runs out? Is that enough time for your company to put up a good enough engineering of these projects to hopefully get a favorable, you know, thing from NERCSE?
Yep. Well, no, no promises on receiving the funding. It's a very competitive process.
Well, I'm just saying, he has enough time to
Yes.
Put something good together to get to them.
They've done many of these, they're very familiar with this process, and it's, it's not atypical to have this short of a window sometimes for these applications.
Unfortunately, that is the case.
But this is a grant, right?
Correct.
And you're, Craig is applying for the grant?
Well, the town is, and I'm the agent on behalf of the town.
Yeah, but you're, you're doing the grant work for them.
Together.
He's coordinating.
Working together, and I would be, I would probably also be attending the meetings along with Eric to make sure that, you know, we're, that our interests are taken into consideration.
It's an 80 to 20 match, Wayne.
Right.
So we put up 20, they put up 80.
Right.
Add a max of how much?
I'm sorry?
Is there a max, 80/20, what's the maximum?
Oh, the maximum award?
Yeah.
Per project?
NERCSE on a construction project?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, so what, what are we looking at?
I mean, really, it's really going to come down to the project, I mean, in terms of...
They probably haven't put a number on it yet, have they?
That's what the application cost is, the preliminary engineering gives you a ballpark estimate. Then, then you submit that to NERCSE if you get approved. So once they create the application, then you'll know, for instance, the Klein Avenue extension, they'll put a price tag, give or take, a preliminary price tag on it, and shoot for that 80%, 20% match.
There isn't a cap. So when you're looking at projects like Munster's doing, the 45th project, Avenue project?
The big ones.
That's a NERCSE project.
That took them multiple years to get that funding.
They're, they're five years out, if you're lucky, they stay five years out. A lot of times, they get pushed, another year and another year. So basically, the way I understand it, the way it works is there's this big pot of money, big pot of money, and everybody applies for it. And typically, whoever scores the highest gets first pick out of the money. If they take all the money, then there's nothing left for anybody else, but, so the object is to score high.
There is a cap, the max, there is a maximum that's usually put in place, and that's determined once the scoring, when they begin the review of the applications.
Right.
Per, per application, and that's why it sometimes takes multiple years of funding to get a large project done. So it's quite likely that we would not get the entire amount of funding we needed for this project in one fell swoop. But once we get in the hopper, I mean, so to speak, all projects that have previously received funding, which are called legacy projects, have first dibs at getting more money towards that project in future years.
So we may get half, we may get half of the award in 2024?
Correct.
And have to wait until 2025 to get the other half?
Or, yeah.
Or later, and they'll split it up.
Yeah, it just depends on what your score is.
This is a, this is a pot of money that's available to the communities in Northwest Indiana, and I, I don't know that we've ever applied. We may have applied in the past, but I don't know, it's been a long time if we have.
I'm not aware of St. John applying in my junior...
For educational value.
It's an opportunity that we should take advantage of if we can get, you know, some money for projects that are important to our community.
Right, and since...
For educational purposes, the Crossing Grant, that's federal money?
Community Crossing is state money.
Oh, that is state money, okay.
So another way that you can score additional points is by gathering other partners? So we're hoping that we can get, since this is a Klein Avenue project, we're hoping that we can get this county, possibly Cedar Lake, possibly Sherrville. The more we partner up with, the higher score we can get, which increases our chances of actually getting the, winning part of this money.
And Craig, you're coordinating these efforts with NERCSE, Charles Pearson, correct?
Bradsky.
Oh, Bradsky, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes.
So I think you set up, or you're setting up a preliminary meeting with all, all those parties, as well as...
Discuss if we want to co-apply, or if they just want to support our application, or however that ends up going.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, Mike?
No.
Wayne?
No. Thank you.
Paul?
Uh, no.
Ryan?
Thanks, Mark.
All right, so then let's look for action on this.
So just for clarification, Mr. President?
Yes.
The, the agenda said 20, 20,000, and now we're saying 7,500?
When we first spoke, it was a higher number, but now...
So we're at 7,500, okay.
So what number do we want to put on there?
7,500.
Okay.
Correct.
Lower's better.
And then we, and so I would think that since Craig is working with, with American Structure Point, I would, I would think maybe we'd authorize him to execute the document?
Sure.
So we could get a motion?
Motion to approve Task Order 1 with American Structure Point for Engineering Services for 2020 NERCSE NOFA projects in an amount not to exceed $7,500 and authorize the town manager to execute the same.
Thank you, Paul. Do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item I, consider Final Change Order Number 2 by Haas Associates for work performed by Walsh and Kelly for the 2019-2020 St. John Community Crossing Municipal Grant Project. And the change order resulted in a final contract payment decrease. Did I get that right? A decrease in the amount of $60,247.26. Craig, anything to add?
So essentially, what this is, is it's the final change order that basically sets the final quantities for all the elements involved in the project. And so, street by street, they've gone through and basically, it's a very long document, as you're aware, if you've seen it. But it goes street by street for each of those projects that were done with the Community Crossings Grant, and lists basically the final quantities and the amounts associated with those, and whether they increased or decreased. And you can see all those amounts, I'm not going to read all those off. But there were two, what they called DES numbers, which are numbers that INDOT uses to track projects. One went up by a little bit, by $11,000, but the other one went, went down by $70,000 and some change, resulting in an overall decrease for the entire project of $60,000 under what was estimated for the overall project cost.
Do we get some portion of that since we're matched in a Crossing Grant? Isn't this a Crossing Grant summary money?
In this case, I'm not sure about that because...
Because I know they said when we gave up that piece...
We get all of that back, I believe, because we ended up paying more, far more than the state portion for those projects. So I believe we get all that.
I was just curious, who's getting the money?
Actually, we just never, we never just, we just never pay it.
Right.
The 930K that we appropriated, do you guys recall that process? This is now not spent out of that. We don't have to...
Right, $60,000 less that we don't spend.
Correct. When, when they executed the work on the street, as they tweak things as they go along, they, they actually saved us money. So it leaves $60,000 in our coffers.
So it's always nice to get a change order that results in a decrease overall for a project and, and for a substantial amount like that, so...
Anybody else have a question?
Where do we put that money, Beth, when it comes back?
This money hasn't gone out.
Hasn't gone out yet.
Oh, it hasn't?
Right.
Oh, okay. So this is a net number then, basically?
One less appropriation.
We had a placeholder. Right.
Okay.
All right, anybody else have any questions or comments on this? All right, then we will look for action. Is there a motion to approve the Community Crossing Grant, CCMG Final Contract Change Order, and authorize the town manager to execute the same? Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item number J, consider water system capacity study by Haas and Associates. So this is a motion... Well, you want to cover this, you got something to cover on this comments, Craig?
Yeah, so I think essentially what we're going to plan on doing here is request that the council refer this to the Water Works Board more appropriately, because it is a water system capacity study, it's more appropriately, should be considered by the Water Works Board. But this is basically a study to allow us to understand an overall system-wide capacity of our water system, which is something that we need to do, basically to understand, you know, where we need to make improvements within the system, whether we need more infrastructure in certain areas, changes we need to make, whether we want to consider adding other facilities or infrastructure. In addition to this, this also assists with the next step in the process, which is also the SCADA system when it's finally installed, to know exactly what needs to be included in that, so...
So you want this referred to the Water Works?
Like to have this referred to the Water Works Board
Okay.
For their consideration.
All right, so be it. All right, we'll go to item K. Consider proposal for bid specs for SCADA system by Haas and Associates.
Same thing, would like to request that this be referred to the Water Works Board for their consideration. This is basically a proposal that would be writing the bid specs for a new SCADA system, which is basically a monitoring system of our water and wastewater system in town, to authorize them to, and to authorize them to accept, open, and award the bids associated with that project.
Yeah, we discussed this when we had a meeting with the, with the boards. Wayne and I were both there, we agreed that this was going to go to Water Works, okay.
Right, now, but I got some comments on that, because the SCADA system, we were talking about it, and we had talked to Haas and Associates, and they said they didn't have to have a bid. And then it changed.
We, okay, I can address that if you want.
And then when we gave it to that company, they were referred to another company, because there was some language that they couldn't do, they couldn't, they couldn't get it together. So we're going to try and pay Haas and Associates, but then they're going to have to go to somebody else. I got some questions on it, and maybe we can get it clarified between now and the...
Yeah, between now and the time it goes to the Water Works Board, we can clarify that.
Right, because I couldn't understand, you know, they had told us, I mean, I don't know what the guy, what he had said, and I'm like, why are we doing this now? There had to be certain specifications, but I think we had that all covered, but...
So are you saying Haas can't handle the engineering in total?
A portion of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the bidding part, the, the, all the different specs for it. So they were going to give it to another company.
Oh, no, that's totally understandable.
Is that the electrical work they were going to sub to Austin? Yeah.
And, and when I had asked about it, I said, when you have an engineering company, we're not digging anything, we're not putting any foundations. And they said, yeah, you're right, you, you don't have to have an engineer. Then all of a sudden, it went back, so we need to get clarification and Craig can work on it with them.
So essentially, what Haas is doing for us in this case, the bulk of what Haas is doing for us in this case is managing the process to make sure that we do it in accordance with state statute, because the bid process per state statute is a very specific process. And just to make sure that, basically, they'll also review the bids we receive to make sure they're technically compliant with the state's requirements. And then they would farm out basically the electronics portion of the, of the SCADA system bid specs to another company. But they would be our agent and working with a sub to make sure that all that gets put together properly, given the fact that it's, you know, it's a substantial investment we're making to make sure it's done right.
It's probably something electronically specific that Haas may be not familiar with.
Civil engineers don't do electrical.
I think when Jerry and I were in that meeting, that the town was going to get, buy the equipment, or some of the equipment, and the other, the other company would, would do the work. But then Jerry had questioned that, why are we doing it this way? Because if he's got, if Jerry and I did something for you, it's Wayne's parts, it's Jerry's stuff, who do you blame when something goes wrong?
Right.
And we, and we don't want a proprietary...
Oh, no, no, I totally understand that.
So that's, you know...
Right, we're all on the same page. We agree.
What we want is we want one person that's going to drive this whole project, so we have one...
Well, you need a coordinator, yeah.
Right. So I, I'd like to, I don't want to slow this thing down, so, I mean, can we get this resolution? Can we get this within the next couple of days, have this meeting? Whether you want me and Wayne and you and Haas and, or, and get Bobby in here?
Right, get Bob.
But let's get this going sooner rather than later.
You'd like another meeting to make sure we're keeping this going in the right direction?
Yeah, I want to make sure we do, I want to make sure we're doing the engineering that we need to, but I don't want to do more engineering than we need to either. And then I'd also like to see if we can call a special Water Works Board meeting.
I had planned on asking the Chair of the Water Works Board if they would be willing to consider a special meeting so that we keep this moving along and.
And maybe we should invite them to the meeting as well?
Sorry?
Invite them to the meeting as well?
At least a representative.
Yeah, the same people that were involved last time, we would invite to this next, this additional meeting.
All right. So does this require any action right now then?
If you want to just authorize them to, you know, the Water Works Board to accept, open, and award the bids, that just makes it clear who's in charge, who's in the drop seat on it.
All right. So as far as the SCADA system, item K, I'm looking for a motion then to approve the proposal for bid specs for the SCADA system by Haas &amp; Associates and to authorize the Water Works Board to accept, open, and award the bids. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Second.
Are you good with this, Wayne?
I just don't want it to drag on further.
That's why we're doing this.
That's why we're doing this.
We're pushing ahead.
We're putting it in their lap, so can I, Mr. President, make discussion?
Yes.
So I, I think we're all on the same page. We all want it to move quickly, but at the same time, we have to be really careful that we don't put a project out that should have been bid and get in trouble. And then the other thing about bid specs, like, we don't want to overkill it, but we have to, some, there has to be actual specifications, so that if something goes wrong, we don't want the company coming back and saying, well, you didn't spec it that way, we gave you this, you thought you were getting that. That's why they, they at least need to draw that up for us, and I'm sure you guys will hammer it out. It sounds like you're close and get it moving.
And then, yeah, and then once the specs are drafted, they would be brought back to, you know, town, town staff and officials for review before they go out.
Yes, yeah, so we're all on the same page. We just want to make sure we do it right. It's a lot of money. So we just want to make sure it's done right, and Wayne, you meet with them, make sure it's just the way you want it. I trust you with that.
Yeah, Bob V has a certain way.
Yep.
And the company that we, we've been dealing with, the Shererville stuff, and they do good work.
So one more comment regarding this, and I read it actually this afternoon, I'm not even sure if you've seen it yet, but Haas was also considering separating out the controls for the towers to help with the water, the peak water. This email just came out like hours ago.
So I think what that is, is they want to put a valve in the gates tank.
Yes.
And they want to put a valve at the base of Hack Street by Public Works. So now when there's a problem in the summer.
The peaks.
The peaks.
Yes.
The usage, they can use the valve at gates, the route, they can close that valve, and it would come over to Hack Street.
Right.
Which is by Public Works, and then that would fill up, and then that would help, hopefully, with some of the problem.
And so what?
And that's while we're waiting for the SCADA system to be installed.
I was just going to say, it'll be all improved by the time SCADA kicks in.
Well, here's the, hold on. So here's what I'm trying to.
One at a time, please.
I'm trying to get to. The email today said that they're recommending that that separate project be just done ahead of time?
Right.
And they could, so that there's not so much pressure on SCADA, because they'll be able to get that improvement online before summer. So that was good news. That's, I like the idea of separating that out as a separate.
And that was also, I think, considered part of the SCADA system, so if the SCADA system was $1,000, and that's going to cost 500, then the SCADA system would only cost 500.
Yeah. It'll still be a portion of it, but they'd get that in first.
Right.
They won't get held up.
And that's like a test to see, you know, okay, if we get that done, that helps.
Yep.
Not that we have to do water main, more water main, and that, but it's, it's a step process.
Yeah, I liked that they broke that step off, because it takes a little pressure off getting the SCADA system done, because they'll have this portion of it in early, so. I just thought I'd bring that up, if, and you'll all see that in your emails, I think, at some point.
Yeah, but we did, made that decision already back at that other meeting.
Oh, good. It just came out. I just read it. Hot off the press. I thought that was good. It's good news.
Nice to have engineers to support it, so that's good.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm sorry, did I get a motion?
In a second, yes.
In a second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That passes five to zero. Item L, To Consider Tendering Retired Officer Schreiber His Service Weapon. This received a favorable recommendation from the Safety Board.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, you may.
It was sent to us once, then we sent it back to the public safety, and now it's back to us. And this involves a retired police officer, and he retired through perf because of a gun-related incident, and I don't know, I believe that further investigation should be done with perf and see if there's, make sure that this is not a violation of any of the rules. And I, and I know, Mr. Westland, I think you have a document, and I'm not going to guess it, the title of it, that you sign off on it, that, or the town would sign off?
Indemnify.
Right, there you go. I wouldn't say that word if it saved my soul, but that's, that's just my comment. I don't know if, what Mr. Westland thinks of it. Is it a good idea?
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to donate this service weapon, it's clearly a good idea to have the indemnification and hold harmless agreement. The question of whether or not you do that is a policy question that you guys get the big bucks for, right? That's not my.
How you say that?
Huh?
We get the big bucks.
Well, that, you're, you're the bosses, right? Like, I just, it's legal, so, you know, that's what you asked me, if it's legal or not. And then the policy question, and my understanding is we've done this in the past.
I think Wayne's main concern, if I'm hearing, because we have done it in the past, but because this particular officer retired for a gun-related incident, does that change the circumstances, I think? Is that what you're hearing?
Right, yeah.
If I'm hearing you correctly.
Right.
You still have the indemnif, from, from a liability perspective.
The town is still protected.
The town is protected. I don't know if that changes your policy decision, but that's.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why I sent this back to the Safety Board, because I believe that it needed, that really should come through them, and that they would do their due diligence, wouldn't run this through and make this recommendation if they didn't think that it was okay according to our policy. So that's why it was here, referred to them, and now it's back to us with their recommendation. But yes, I understand. So, so in order to receive this, we want to execute the indemnification and hold harmless agreement that Mr. Westland has provided for us. So is there a motion to approve this? So is there a motion to approve tendering retired Officer Schreiber his service weapon upon satisfactory execution of the required indemnification and hold harmless agreement? I need a motion. We're either going to accept this, deny it, or defer it. It can't just hang.
I'll make a motion to defer until we find out from, Wayne wants to do an investigation with perf.
Yeah, Wayne brought up information I'm completely unaware of, so, yeah, I'll second that referral.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
Just don't know.
So, so we have a motion to defer, and a second. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. So that is deferred, five to zero. All right. Item M, To Ratify Appointments to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Let's see. So Town Council Action is to advise public that Donna Fatkey and Kathy Van Scowen were appointed to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee in late March, since it was during the lockdown period, the meeting where they were to be appointed had been canceled. So I guess we need a motion to.
Are they, are they both on a board now?
Yes.
Both of them?
No, the ones, the one's gone already, but we wanted to get her put in before she resigned.
Which, which one's gone?
Um, Van Cohen.
Okay, all right, okay, that one's gone.
Yeah, she's gone and been replaced by a young lady sitting back here. That's Joan, which has already been approved.
Right. But this, this came up last month, too. We had.
It was canceled, and this was the.
But you had, you had people sitting on boards that weren't appointed, and now we, this comes up from the beginning of the year. I do remember, we, we interviewed this lady, Donna, but why is it, I know it's kind of late.
Because we missed the boat, and we wanted to be transparent about it.
But she, but she served on, on a board.
There's been no votes or anything.
Okay, but that was going to be my question.
Yeah, there's been an educational, educational period of about three months so far.
Right.
Where they're just being taught what they need to do.
Right, and this is for the Impact Advisory Committee?
Exactly, the road impact.
Okay, well, that's, I just want to make sure it's, we didn't make no mistakes.
Okay.
We don't have any more next month, do we?
No, no, everybody, Jack's on, and.
We got it, we got it filled out.
Joan is on, two of the members are sitting right here.
Okay. So do we need a motion for this, or can they just be appointed?
Well, this was done for public transparency is all.
Yeah, I mean, they could be appointed.
Brian, are you ratifying their appointment?
Yes.
So it'd be a motion to ratify the appointment.
I'd like a motion to ratify Donna Fatkey and Kathy Van Cowan, who has now resigned, but at the time when she was put on in March, she was an active member.
Okay.
I'd like to get a ratification with the council.
Is there support for that?
Can you do that, if she's gone now? Okay.
You had to get her on to let her resign, so.
You can't, you can't let her resign if she was not to begin with.
Right. Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mike.
I was there with a second, Mike.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, that passes, is approved, five to zero. Item number eight, Reports and Correspondence. I'll start on this side. Mike?
Nothing.
Wayne?
Nothing.
Paul?
I'd just like to, for the public, let them know that we're already working hard on next year's paving projects and CCG grant. Craig is coordinating that out of his office. With Haas Engineering, we had a conference call, was it yesterday?
Yesterday.
With Bob Davis, and trying to maximize our dollars, we're shifting some roads, going to repave some roads with Tiff. And I've talked to councilmen individually about it, how we're trying to shuffle a few roads here and there. We're going to do a bid alternate with the Phase Two 96 Avenue, and try to do Thielen and Joliet, Part of Joliet with that bid alternate, and trying to get all of last year's roads caught up, and a few more that Bob Davis would like done, so. So that's exciting. That, that, the CCG, which is the Indiana Community Crossings Grant, is, I believe, opening any day now, and.
It's already open.
It's open as well, so, so at the same time, NERC grant's open, we have CCG at the exact same time.
It has a similar deadline, I believe it's October 23rd, if I'm not mistaken, on CCG grants.
Correct. And Haas is working that for us, and I'm, again, I'm saying this more for the public, because I think all the councilmen are aware, so Haas is working this for us, so we're not going to be caught with one engineering firm doing the prelim and application, and another engineering firm coming later and saying, no, that's not right. So the same firm will be doing it from start to finish, so the numbers will be, yeah, so the numbers.
Are they going to give us two proposals, one to do it a Band-Aid way, and one to do it a little bit more in-depth?
I think Haas prefers to do it the conservative, good way, like you prefer, the, the longer-lasting way.
For one complete recommendation.
Yep, they're doing it the right way.
Because the last time, that's why the confusion, and that's why 11 Streets didn't get it done.
Correct.
And then it was in the paper, and then everybody like, what happened?
Yeah, no, they're going to, Haas tends to, to prefer to do it the right way, so for a longer-lasting product.
So doing it that way, their way, we should get two, three, I mean, three or four years, X rather, a road.
They, they like doing it the right way, and the ones they did this year look good, so.
All right, that's good.
Yep.
Anything else?
I think that's all I got for now.
All right. I just have a couple of things. Number one, the Safety Board meeting, Acting Corporal Zuzic was promoted to corporal, so I would like to congratulate him. And then also, we've been getting some correspondence, and I've been getting some questions regarding trick or treat.
Yeah, I was going to address that, but you can go ahead.
You're going to hand, okay, no, you can do that in your report then? Okay. That's all I've got. Beth?
First, going back to the budget, I forgot to mention that the 2021 budget, it's, we're tight, Brian and I talked about that, so as far as just add this on, just add that on, that's not going to fly in 2021, because we pretty much, in my opinion, and I'm a little conservative with the budget, we've increased it.
Or maxed out.
I don't, yeah, I'm not real comfortable with add this or add that next year. Next month, we're going to end up doing additional appropriations, so be on the lookout for that, and that'll hopefully get us through the end of the year. We are proceeding with Christmas in the Park, so our fireworks guy, RKM, he is graciously looking to donate $2,500 worth of fireworks for this upcoming year, and then he will charge the town $3,000 worth of fireworks. And so I was looking to see if you guys would, or if the council would consider accepting the $2,500 donation in fireworks, and came into RKM in the amount of $3,000 for the Christmas in the Park fireworks.
Does that fit into your budget?
It does fit into the budget.
Okay, then she's looking for a motion, gentlemen.
So moved for the fireworks for Christmas in the park.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Support.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
I did forget something, I got my nose wheel over here.
All right, I'll get back to you in a minute.
Right.
All right, so that is approved.
Thank you.
What else do you have? Anything else?
No.
Okay, Wayne?
I keep bringing up study sessions, and I think we need to have study sessions as a town. I think there's a lot going on, and more study sessions instead of just what we've had. I like to, I keep hammering.
We've had them the last two months.
Well, we need to have another one.
Well, that's fine, but.
I'm just saying, I'm going on record that I think that's a good, a good thing. And I brought up the road behind McDonald's, that short little strip that's not getting fixed.
Mm-hmm.
How do we go about getting it fixed?
We contact, we contact the owner and ask them to fix it, give them a certain time period in which to make those repairs.
Okay, then you already probably know the owner, or do you have to, we have to give you the, the address and?
We'll verify that, but, but we can, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the Building and Planning Department about that.
All right, that's good.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Craig, anything?
Just two things, trick or treat. Just wanted to, just give an update. A lot of residents have been contacting us, asking questions about whether or not we're having trick or treat this year on Halloween. We are planning on having that as regularly scheduled from 5:00 to 7:00 on Halloween, October 31st. People who are interested in participating would, would turn their porch light on, and if they're not interested in participating, would not. Basically, you know, we feel it's up to the individual families to decide whether or not they want to participate, and not, you know, for the town to decide whether or not that activity takes place. So, like I said, gotten questions from a lot of different residents, and actually the media as well, so hopefully if they're paying attention, they'll get that information as well. We'll also put this information out on the town website and social media.
I would suggest for the town website, Jason, that we put it out in front, in other words, so they don't have to go hunting for it.
Well, it'll be, it'll be a banner.
Okay.
On top. And then I just also, I believe all of you are aware at this point, but I want to take the opportunity to thank Rick Everly for his service to the town. He had notified us that he will be resigning from his position as Building and Planning Director for the town and has taken another position. So I want to thank him for his many years of service to the town over a variety of different segments. From what I understand, he, I think 20-plus years ago, he was the zoning administrator and then he's been the Building and Planning Director for many years as well. So I just want to thank him for all the hard work he's done for the town over his years of service and wish him the best on his new endeavor.
Okay. Here, here. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Westland, anything?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? All right. I guess we go to request to purchase. Item number nine.
I'm sure we have some requests to purchase. The first is from Tricon Electronics for the amount of $35,693. This is to replace the phone system throughout the town. This would be for parts only. IP will install that system. The next request to purchase is for Axon Enterprise for hazer packages for the police department in the amount of $5,127. We have our salt. Let me make sure I've got both of them, our street salt. So we are bound to purchasing 80% of the street salt and then 20% is to be kept in reserve. So it's coming to you in two different RTPs.
Mm-hmm.
The 80% that we must purchase will be in the amount of $170,820 and that's to Cargill. The 20% reserve is in the amount of $42,705, again, to Cargill. We have an RTP to Jay and Jay Newell Concrete. This is for annual concrete repairs in the amount of $24,893. Ferguson Water Works for water heater replacements of registers in the amount of $10,800. We have Steel Master of Indianapolis. This is for steelings for road maintenance in the amount of $5,040. And last one is to waste management for the biannual street sweeping in the amount of $12,784.
Gentlemen, any questions on these? Then I will ask for one motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to purchases.
I'll second.
Okay. So we're approving the request to purchase, submitted, and then authorize the clerk treasurer to pay the same. Correct?
Yes.
Yes? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. That is passed. Five to zero. Item number 10, payment to the bills. All right. So you've got the docket in front of you. Is there one docket, right? It's all general?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. All right. So one docket for the amount of $2,717.7, I'm sorry, $2,717,742.17. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there support?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved. Five to zero. Item number 11. Before I go to that, Mike, anything else? Before, Wayne, anything?
No.
Paul?
Just, Beth, I just read today, stage five is in effect. So Christmas in the Park, you ought to be able to roll with it. Looking forward to that. Finally, something normal. So thank you for putting that together. Appreciate that. Yeah, I'm glad the governor's cooperating.
Brian, anything else?
Fun part of her job.
Brian, anything?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want, really want to thank you guys because it was a lot of work going through all these documents, all this budget stuff. And for those of us that didn't spend as much time on it as others, I want to thank those that did. Beth, you did a great job putting this together. Eric, we appreciate the work that you did here and, you know, department heads. Greg, your work there is really appreciated that this was done. It was concise. It's balanced. And it's something that the town can afford. So I appreciate all your work there.
I think too, Jerry, that if, because the department heads were so instrumental in preparing the budgets and actually being involved in the numbering process, I think that's going to make a big difference as far as how things run next year because they're going to know what they requested to begin with.
Well, that's just that they requested. It's now they're going to have to live with it.
Exactly.
Right, Beth? No extras.
Right.
We already discussed that.
We're, everything's pinned down for five years.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.